America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
All members are present. Any announcements before we begin? Okay, Dr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. For the community, we have the budget presentation posted on our budget page. It's also in the Board of Education page, and we will have video of each one of the budget sessions posted to the budget page as well. So there's a handout at the front of the room if you didn't receive one, in addition to all of the stuff on the webpage. So there's basically two things for our opening budget proposal for 2017-18. We're going to review the governor's budget and how it turned out and how it's impacting Clarence, and then we're going to review the first draft of the 2017-18 Clarence budget. So we'll start with the governor. The governor has put forward a proposal for a billion dollars in additional aid to schools, but not all of that aid gets distributed equally among school districts. The most important number in the governor's budget is foundation aid. It's the aid that all school districts receive according to a particular formula. The governor is proposing a $428 million increase in foundation aid, with 50 million of that set aside for community schools. Community schools' funds are utilized by school districts that have a high poverty situation and lots of English language learner students, like the city of Buffalo would. We would not qualify for any of that 50 million. The money beneath foundation aid is what makes up the rest of the $1 billion from the governor. 333 million is aid that is expense-driven. For us, that means special education, transportation, and BOSEs. You spend it in one year, and New York State gives you aid back on it the next year. Our aid ratio is about 60 cents on the dollar. So every dollar we spend on transportation, BOSEs, and a good chunk of special education costs ends up coming back to us a year late. The governor put in fiscal stabilization aid, an after-school program, enhanced universal pre-K, and a couple of other initiatives that is equaling $1 billion. Couple of things about the governor's foundation aid proposal. The first thing that's a little bit worrisome for us is that the governor's foundation aid proposal essentially repeals the existing foundation aid formula and replaces it with the governor's formula. The existing formula has been in place since 2007. In 2007, there was a lawsuit against the city of New York called the Campaign for Fiscal Equity, and it determined the value of a school education in New York State. There was slated to be a large increase in school aid to all school districts across New York State. It lasted one year in 2008. Then we started to run into economic problems, and the governor and New York State has not funded it since. What the governor is proposing in his foundation aid formula is to get rid of the old CFE formula and replace it with his own. Essentially, that also eliminates the idea that the state owes school districts money from past budgets. The governor's foundation aid would be that each district receives what they received in the prior year, so everybody would get the aid that they got in 2016-17, plus a base increase. That increase would range anywhere from 1% to 15%, depending upon the needs that are on this particular slide. So some of the elements of the governor's proposed aid formula are the same as the CFE formula. One thing that the new formula would reflect is differences in pupil needs: poverty, sparsity geographically, English language learner students, et cetera. There was always, even in the old formula, the local ability to fund education taken into an account. There's also a regional cost index, and higher places in the state where there are higher prices and cost of living, like New York City and Long Island, get a break on school aid. And the guaranteed minimum increase would be 1% for every school district across New York State. That's in foundation aid. For Clarence, our foundation aid difference from this year to last year was 1.3%. So we would be on the low end of this particular formula. The executive formula did provide $50 million for community schools, but it's really limited to school districts that are struggling, and we are not a school district that's struggling, so we would not be eligible for that particular aid. So in summary, the foundation aid for the governor is a little over $400 million. It repeals the old formula and switches in a brand-new formula that the governor has created, and everybody gets what they got last year, plus at least 1%, up to a maximum of 15%. I don't know any school district that got 15%, but some district must have gotten that. Here's some of the other stuff in the governor's budget. There's $150 million of what the governor calls fiscal stabilization aid. Essentially, this is the pot of money that the legislature gets to mess around with in the budget negotiations between now and April 1st. This number usually comes out much lower than $150 million, but this year, the governor put it at $150 million. So this money is not yet allocated. It could go towards foundation aid, or it could go towards anyplace else that the legislature and the governor agrees on. The governor put in an additional $5 million to expand universal pre-K to three- and four-year-olds, some three-year-olds. Right now, Clarence has about 96 kids in universal pre-K. We get about $240,000 in grant money from New York State to take care of that. If we expanded to three-year-olds, that would probably double the amount of kids in UPK. $5 million just won't cut it across the state to have everybody do that. The governor put money into something he calls early college high schools, and they are funded with a priority for computer science curriculum. There's one early college high school in Erie County. It's in the city of Buffalo. The governor put in $2 million to offset the fees for AP exams that are not covered by federal funds or local funding. We have over 25 AP exams that our kids take. It's mostly covered by the kids. I think we may cover a couple of fees when kids can't do that, but $2 million wouldn't cover it for the entire state. Governor put in something called the Master Teacher Program, $2.5 million to give grants of $15,000 each to high-performing teachers in computer science, or $5,000 grants for high-performing teacher professional development. The governor also puts in $22 million out of that billion for charter school increased tuition reimbursement. His proposal also eliminates the cap on charter schools, so that a charter school may be restored after closing, and it unfreezes charter school tuition and phases it in over three years. The governor's budget proposal also has in it a millionaire's tax, which is retained. It's set to expire. If the millionaire's tax is retained, that will generate about $3.4 billion for the budget. The governor has stated that without the millionaire's tax, there wouldn't be able to be a large increase in aid to education. Finally, the governor freezes the STAR reimbursement at last year's level. So, that's a little bit about what the governor had in his particular proposal. A little bit about how it affects Clarence. First, the governor's proposal for school aid, even though it's $1 billion year-over-year, falls short of the aid that was recommended by both the Educational Conference Board, which is an organization made up of PTOs, teachers' associations, superintendents groups, school business officials. They recommended $2 billion just to fund year-over-year costs, and the Board of Regents for New York State recommended $2.1 billion. So the governor's proposal is about half of what the regents and the Educational Conference Board say schools needed. The governor's proposed budget does not fully fund foundation aid. It's almost $4 billion of money that is owed to school districts as a result of foundation aid being underfunded since 2008. The governor's proposal redoes the aid category and puts in his own formula. It's our view that the governor should fully fund foundation aid before he starts to allocate funding for other new programs. Out of the billion dollars that was there, only a little over $400 million went to foundation aid. The governor is also seeking unilateral power to make a mid-year budget change to education aid, should there be a shortfall in New York State revenues. There's potentially a shortfall for the Affordable Care Act in New York State revenues. There's other problems that could pop up for the state. This is something that would make it extraordinarily hard for school districts to budget, if we were counting on a particular amount of aid, and we set our budget that was voted on by the community at that level of aid, and then the governor cut it. As far as I can recall, there was only one mid-year adjustment to aid in the history of the last 50 years, and that was 1991. Even in the Great Recession years, we didn't get a cut mid-year in aid. This is a chart that shows the Educational Conference Board, the Board of Regents, and the governor's budget, what they all were recommending for school aid. Educational Conference Board and the regents, they recommended a little over $2 billion. Governor's budget has $1 billion. The Educational Conference Board and the regents had about $1.5 billion in foundation aid. The governor has about $428 million. The Conference Board and the regents wanted to update the formula. The governor wants to replace it with his own formula. Everybody agreed that about $330 million would take care of expense-driven aids, and the governor put that in his budget. There's an increase in UPK in the governor's budget, and the regents wanted much more than that. There are some other aids in all three of the proposals. There were some tax cap changes proposed for the Educational Conference Board, but not by the regents or the governor. The governor is the only entity that listed an increase to charter schools, and there are about 430 school districts across the state right now who are already getting more money than they would get if the foundation aid was to run completely. They are in a situation called "save harmless." All three of the proposals would make sure that those school districts got at least a 1% increase. Clarence is not "save harmless," by the way. So, some of the things that we're going to argue for as we meet with our legislators, our state assembly person and our state senator, the biggest thing that we'll advocate for are additional dollars to foundation aid. There's a bunch of money in the governor's proposal. It's for things that did not exist prior to this year. Our thought is, put the money in foundation aid, let school districts utilize it before you start funding additional things. A predictable foundation aid formula needs to be created. For years, we had something called the gap elimination adjustment, where the state would give money to school districts, then take it back away. That ended last year. School districts need to know a sustainable foundation aid number. The tax cap has a couple of anomalies to it that probably need to be fixed. No one would advocate for getting rid of the tax cap, but fixing some of the broken pieces of the tax cap are something that we'll advocate for. Another thing, especially for districts like Clarence, allow districts that are in good standing the flexibility to be able to not have to do all of the things that school districts that are not in good standing have to do in terms of regulations with the state. And finally, school aid is still linked to teacher evaluations. It's a mistake to do that, and we would advocate with our legislators to get rid of that particular idea. So, it's a little bit about the governor's budget. A pretty good start. What will happen between now and the next couple of months is that the legislature and the governor will battle out. In order for an on-time budget to be here, April 1st is the deadline to have the budget completed. Hopefully, we'll know right around that date, so that the Board of Education doesn't have to guess on school aid. Okay. How about the Clarence budget for 2017-18? Where are we? Well, we're going to start with what we've talked about the past couple of budget sessions. We have two big philosophical statements in our budget development. One, we want to protect or enhance the core programs of the district, and secondly, we want to exhibit fiscal responsibility with our community's tax dollars. So, how does our process work? Well, this is kind of an overview of the steps that we take. Starting in November, there are feedback sessions with our administrators and supervisors. Rick Mancuso and I meet with all of the principals. We meet with the transportation, buildings and grounds supervisors. We meet with special education, and everyone talks to us about their needs year-over-year. Second, we estimate the total revenue in our budget. Third, we determine the budget increases in order to sustain programs year-over-year. We then review our prior-year expenditures. We talk about things that could potentially be added as program enhancements. We estimate our preliminary budget, and that's where we are right now. Once the governor puts out his aid numbers, we usually budget to those particular aid numbers, and then we have lots of community dialogue until the Board of Education votes, and finally, the community votes on the budget. So where are we this year? Well, remember, there's two big parts of our budget. There's a revenue part and an expenditure part. There are three big drivers of revenue in school budgets. The biggest driver for Clarence is property taxes. The second biggest chunk comes from the state in the form of school aid, and a nominal chunk comes from sales tax revenue in Erie County. The property tax cap constrains the amount of revenue that the district can raise, and it has done so for the past six years. Clarence has kept property tax increases low over the past nine years, and we'll show you a chart about that in just a second, and Clarence has been at or below the level of the property tax cap each year it has been in existence. So, this budget will also reflect a budget either at or slightly below the tax cap. State school aid is also capped. It is capped to and tied to the growth of personal income in New York State. The governor has exceeded the cap on school aid for the past couple of years, but one thing that was reduced altogether last year was the gap elimination adjustment, and doing so brought significant aid to this district last year. We ended up banking a portion of that aid because we knew we would need to use it in reserve money to balance our budget over the next couple of years, and we are going to have to do that, and we're going to show you how in a couple of minutes. Foundation aid to Clarence is 6% lower this year than if the proper formula was run. The state has come through in the past couple of budget cycles. They have given us more money than we anticipated. It doesn't look like that's going to happen this year. We are more dependent on state aid than we have been in many different years. So, some assumptions as we build the revenue side of our budget. We think sales tax is going to increase about 2% year-over-year. That's a conservative estimate, and we've been close on those estimates over the past five or six years. Our local revenues, which is the money we get from investments, payments in lieu of taxes, miscellaneous fees and things like that, it's going to remain flat year-over-year. One thing that will probably increase is the amount of fund balance or the amount of reserve money that we put into the budget in order to make it balance. We don't know how much yet, because we're going to wait until we discover the total of state aid, but we will probably have to dip into our fund balance and reserves if the increase in state aid is low. Right now, our tax cap levy, and it's not 100% official until March 1st, but right now, our tax cap number is 1.7%. That's going to be the lowest cap number that we've had in the age of the tax cap. That number of 1.7% will generate about $800,000 in revenue. We anticipated about a 3% increase in New York State school aid. So far, we've only gotten about a 1% increase in school aid. So we're going to have to count on our legislators to come through and provide us with more school aid, or we're going to have to dip into our reserves. A little bit about our expenses in the first draft of the budget. Our wages are up about 3% overall, and that's 75% of the spending that we have in the school district. Our retirement system costs are actually down, and we received a little bit more good news today. The retirement system cost is actually a little bit lower than what we were budgeting. Our special education costs are up about 2%. Our debt service is really costing out per our schedule. Our healthcare expenses are up 5%, but self-funding has really limited that particular increase, and all of our employee groups contribute more towards healthcare this year than they have in any other year. All other costs in our district, BOSEs, utilities, supplies, equipment, up about 1% year-over-year, and we've been able to mitigate the cost of some of those things through the efficiency measures that we utilize: purchasing cooperatives, sharing things with other districts. So, this is a chart that we've been using the past couple of years, and it shows the last nine years of spending increases and tax levy increases. So from 2008 to 2011, there wasn't a cap, and you can see what the spending and tax levy increases were. From 2012 until last year, there was a cap, and the Clarence School District has been at or below the cap every year. For the past three years, the governor has rebated the increase above and beyond the previous year's tax bill for schools. There's no mention of a rebate in this year's budget from the governor, so we don't think it's in there, although we haven't read every single fine print yet, but we don't think it's there. But, if you take a look at the last nine years, our spending increase has averaged a little under 2%, and our tax levy increase has averaged a little under 2%. There's not many school districts in New York State who could show you a chart that looked like this. So, what about programs year-over-year? Well, our goals for 2017-18 are the same goals that we've had the past couple of years. Once we've managed to get ourselves out of the financial crisis that we were in, our goals are no reductions to staff and either maintain or improve all of our existing programs. The capped tax levy alone, remember, it's about $800,000 for us, it will not provide us with enough funds to maintain all of our programs year-over-year. The governor's budget doesn't give us enough aid to balance the budget year-over-year. So, we're going to have to either get some larger increases in state aid, or we're going to have to use our reserves in order to fund the rollover budget. One thing's for sure, we're not going to propose a tax levy above or beyond the cap, so that's going to be at 1.7%. Right now, the unknown is, what will we finally get in state aid? We need an increase of a little over 3%. We're currently getting an increase of about 1%. We do have reserves that we can utilize in order to balance the budget, no matter what happens at the state level. So this chart shows you a little bit of the history of when we did some reductions, from the years 2011 to 2014, and what we've done the past three years as far as restorations. In 2014-15, we restored the clubs and sports that had been funded through the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation. In 2015-16, we received more state aid than we anticipated, so we added some teaching and other employee positions back in, and then last year, we did the same. We likely cannot do any restorations this year unless our state aid comes in much higher than it currently is. So, what are some positive parts of our program that we really like to emphasize during this budget time? Well, here's some statistics from the class of 2016, last year's senior kids. 61% of those kids earned an advanced designation diploma, meaning that they had additional math and science courses. 93% of our kids went to a two- or a four-year college. 20 kids graduated from our finance academy, 27 kids from our pre-engineering academy, and the class of 2016 had over 26,000 hours of community service, a great group of kids. And this class coming up, even better. What about some program accomplishments? Well, we have 30 musical performing groups and over 1,600 participants, and even though our enrollment has dropped a little bit at the elementary school, the percentage of kids that participate in music has not. We have reasonable class sizes at most of our elementary grades. Every elementary school has a bubble where there's a little bit higher class size than we'd like. We will show you enrollment in February during that particular budget meeting. We think we're going to be in pretty good shape next year. There are 60 elective course offerings at Clarence High School, 19 advanced placement, and 12 college-level courses, 69 sports teams with a little over 1,600 participants, and 60 extracurricular opportunities between Clarence Middle School and Clarence High School. We like to brag on our program a little bit during budget time. Some other stuff from Business First. Clarence is first overall in cost effectiveness out of 96 Western New York school districts. That's cost per pupil administrative efficiency. We are second overall in cost effectiveness out of 431 upstate school districts. Upstate meaning everything beyond the Hudson River. We're second overall in administrative efficiency in Western New York. We're third overall in administrative efficiency upstate. We're the third lowest spending per pupil in Western New York, and we have the second highest teacher experience in Western New York. And we have the second lowest full-value tax rate in Western New York. Some more Business First stuff. We have the third highest academic ranking, first in science, second in math, 15th in social studies, fourth in English, second for athletic program, and a new statistic that Business First put out this year, college readiness as measured by the percentage of kids who receive the aspirational score on the algebra or English Regents exam. You have to get an 85 or better on the algebra, is it? Algebra, and a 75 or better on the English, and we have the third highest percentage of students in New York State who receive those particular scores. So our kids are college and career-ready by any measure. New York State put out its fiscal report card just last week, and here's how we measure up. For expenditures per pupil, you can see Clarence's in green, similar schools, our schools with the same demographic as us, and all school districts in New York State are the third column. So we are, as far as expenditures per pupil for general ed, much lower than New York State, and much, much lower than similar schools. Expenditures per pupil for special ed, same trend. Total expenditures per pupil, you can see the difference. Our students with disabilities classification rate is a little bit lower than the state average, and just about the same as school districts like us. Congratulations, Mary Ellen. These are some academic comparisons. You can see the percentage of students who graduate within four years in Clarence compared to Erie County and compared to New York State, the percentage of kids who get advanced designation Regents diplomas, and the proficiency level on all the grade 3 to 8 math and ELA tests. By any measure, Clarence does better than Erie County and better than New York State on average. So, what about the first draft of the budget and where we're at? Our assumptions. The tax levy will be at or below the cap. Right now, that's 1.7%. It is subject to a little bit of change. It probably won't fluctuate much. It's probably going to come in right at that number, and we will have the exact number for you in the March budget meeting. We don't have any budget reductions in this particular draft of the budget. We have rolled it over from one year to the next. We don't have any reductions- We don't have any reductions in any programs or staffing. We anticipate seven teacher retirements in this budget. If we don't get to seven, we're going to have to do some rearranging with some of our dollars and cents. We'll know by the February meeting how many teachers are retiring for next year. Our wages are up three percent. Our pension costs are down slightly. Our debt service is running according to our amortization schedule. All of our other expenses are up by one, except for health care, which is up by five percent. And actually, five percent isn't bad when you take a look at it regionally or statewide. There are many double-digit increases for people that don't self-fund. Dr. Patac has done a great job with the self-funding for Clarence. So what are we going to do? We're going to use a combination of state aid, revenue, and reserve to stay within the tax cap for 2017-18. And, we're recommending the purchase of buses again. We've now gone five years in a row of purchasing buses. There will be no impact on the tax levy year-over-year for purchasing buses as long as we keep it at about the same amount as we have the last five years, and we are. One debt will come off, another debt will come on, and we're in that cycle now where there's really no impact for purchasing buses. So, this year, our total was seventy-eight-point-one million dollars. We know we're going to be able to get about seven-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars with a one-point-seven percent tax cap. That means everything else has to be at about one-point-three million dollars to get us to our budget of eighty-point-two million. Right now, we're about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars towards that particular number. We're going to need about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars either in additional state aid or through the use of our reserves or our fund balance in order to make sure, year-over-year, that this budget balances and we don't have any cuts. This is our bus purchase recommendation. Right now, we're on a cycle where we are replacing a bus about every ten to twelve years. Five big ones, two wheelchair, two thirty-passenger buses. Our trade-in of the ten buses we're going to get rid of will yield about seventeen thousand dollars. So, eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the buses. The impact is really tax-cap neutral. So that gives you an idea of where we are in the first draft of the budget. Like I said, in February, we're going to give you enrollment, and then in March, we wrap everything up, hopefully to be voted on by the Board on April thirteenth. So, Board of Ed, I'm assuming we'll take questions from the community? So if you have a question, please stand or come on down to the mic, and we will answer any of the community's questions. Ms. Wild, if you'd just speak up if you like.
I think I'm loud enough. A couple of quarters ago, I had asked about a unified sports program for special education students. And I was informed that, you know, we look into it for the next year's budget and save it for this budget. I'm wondering if we can put it in the budget.
Right. We're actually trying to put it into this year's budget. And we'll have that recommendation for the Board of Ed. We have an estimated cost of about ten thousand dollars to get it going. We think we're going to have enough in surplus this year to be able to do it. So we're trying to put it in this year's budget, and then it would just retain in next year's budget. Any other questions?
Any board member have questions? Not at this point? Okay. Thank you very much. Our personnel, Dr. Patac.
Just have one action item. It's a recommendation to accept the resignation of a teacher for purposes of retirement.
Okay. Any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor? Well, we did our public input session, but I'll give everyone another chance. If you'd like to ask any questions or comments, to just walk to the microphone. Not at this time? Okay. Well, at this time, then, we need, we'll motion to move to executive session for the purposes of discussion matters leading to the potential discipline of a particular employee. Second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And have a good evening.